Good evening and welcome to the Norwood Planning Board Meeting, Monday night, December 21st, 2020. This meeting is conducted digitally using GoingToMeeting. If someone is not familiar with that, there are directions explaining how to join the meeting and found immediately below in the agenda. Okay? Seven o'clock, the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Does anybody have any questions or any corrections that need or might need to be made on that? I see none. Do I have a motion to accept? Thank you, Mr. Sheen.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hatchey. Excuse me. Go on. We have two minutes for the 7:05 site plan review for Moderna on Upland Road. Patrick, are you ready for any?
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, what was that, Al?
Are you ready if there's any drawings of the plan layout?
Yep. So, Mr. Barry, am I making you the presenter?
Okay.
Yes, I can present the plans.
Mr. Chairman, this is not a legally advertised public hearing, so if you want to start a minute earlier, you can.
Let's start. Okay. And Kim Patel?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing Moderna to present tonight. As you said, my name is Bankham Patel. I lead engineering at Moderna. I want to thank you and the rest of the town's administration for being true partners in our mission to deliver on the promise of mRNA science to create transformative medicines for patients. It's with this partnership in mind we are here tonight to seek approval of an expansion project to the One Moderna Way Building. With me tonight are Scott Nickerson, SVP and Head of US Manufacturing, Matt Barrows, Senior Director of COVID Vaccine Manufacturing, Doyle Johnson of IPS, the lead design firm, Bill Held of Cardinal Group, the construction managers, Mike Rangione and Brandon Barry of PAR, the civil and structural engineers for the project. The submitted drawings, we believe, contain the information required to convey the scope. However, we recognize they may need to be modified based on your feedback tonight. We ask for your understanding in this regard, considering the goal to further enable the production of COVID vaccine. Rest assured, we will update as required in a timely manner. Before we get into the details of the project, Scott would like to say a few words. Scott?
Thank you, Bankham. Hi, everyone. Scott Nickerson, in charge of manufacturing for Moderna for the US. The time of this meeting is quite auspicious for where we are in Moderna's history. I want to thank the town of Norwood and all of you for your partnership and collaboration over the past number of years. I personally have been at Moderna almost five years now and have been along the way for the build of Moderna since it went live in January, excuse me, of the summer of 2018. It's been quite a journey for us over the past year, as you may have followed from when we received the sequence of the coronavirus in January of this year to making our first GMP material for Phase 1 out of the Norwood facility and starting those Phase 1 trials, all the way through our 30,000-person Phase 3 trial that is still in progress, but we have had a readout on, obviously, in the past few weeks. The data has been quite astounding with a 94% effective rate and 100% effective against severe COVID hospitalization. Again, I'd like to personally thank the town of Norwood for your partnership over the past few years in partnering with us to bring this facility online. We're very proud of the accomplishments we've had so far, but we have a big lift in front of us to continue this journey with making COVID vaccine now that we have approved or we have received emergency use authorization this past Friday with CDC approval over the weekend. We have begun distribution of our COVID vaccine over the weekend through our partners, and we've actually dosed our first subjects today. So, frankly, just at the beginning of this journey and are looking to ramp and scale our manufacturing operations. The presentation that we're going to give you today is looking at additional capability and capacity so that we can continue to scale those operations. Just for some numbers for you to key in on what we're shooting for, we have released upwards of 7.5 million doses to the American public just in the past few days with a target of releasing 20 million total by the end of this year. We're on track to meet our commitment to the US government of 100 million total doses in Q1 and 200 million total doses by Q2. So, again, I want to thank you for your partnership. I'll turn it back over to Bankham. We'll take any questions that you have at the back end.
Thank you. Bankham, you go ahead. You've got the floor.
Sorry. That was unmuted, unfortunately. Doyle, Mike, and Brandon, if you'd like to start, please.
Okay. Mike, why don't you just go ahead?
Brandon Barry is our lead site guy, so he's going to walk you through these plans that we have up on the screen. I'm assuming everybody can see the screen at this point? Okay, perfect. Brandon, why don't you take it from here?
Yep. So, the plan I have up here is the site plan showing the proposed building addition to support the production of the vaccine within the building. We're looking at the northwest side of the existing building onsite. Existing building's about 136,000 square feet, and we're showing it currently with just over a 12,000-square-foot addition in the northwest corner. This addition will go in a location where there's three existing loading docks and then some existing landscaping areas and a few walkways connecting some of the access from the building to the parking areas onsite. So, we will not be impacting any existing site parking areas or circulation as a result of the change for this building, and we'll be creating new green space to the north of it as shown by our curb line here. A pretty minor change from a site plan where this is all within landscaping and a delivery area, also new walkways being constructed to provide access to the new addition. As we move into our grading and utility plan, that's where more of the site work is occurring, really. There's an existing sewer line that crosses through the footprint of the proposed addition that will be rerouted as part of this project to accommodate the building addition. And then we'll make a small change to the existing stormwater management system that is onsite to accommodate the change with the building addition. As I had mentioned, things that we look for for our site plan are changes to site plant or site parking and circulation, none of which are impacted or reduced as part of this project. The site, as we calculate it with the building addition, will require just under 300 parking spaces, where it currently has just under 400. So, the site has sufficient parking to accommodate this change. We don't need to provide any additional parking as a result of the building. As I had mentioned, a small stormwater system is proposed onsite to offset the small increase from the additional impervious area of the building. We have talked with some town staff on our approach for that, even though preliminarily, and gotten some constructive feedback on what we were proposing here. As I said, a pretty minor site plan change given where we are working, existing loading dock that will be impacted, but there is still additional loading operation onsite. We won't change circulation or access or parking, which are three of the big things that we would look for in a site plan. So, with that, while what's going on inside the building is pretty substantial, the site work to accommodate it is relatively minor in nature. So, if there are any other questions, as we said, we can take those at the end of the call.
I would like to interject and just say that some of the building footprint is in the area that's landscaped today, and any of the trees that may be impacted, we will, of course, replace in kind. And also, as you can see, that little triangle area, the angled area, that's going to be additional, what I would call a grass area, that we're hoping to replace some of the areas that were disturbing.
Okay. You have more? Or would you like some questions at this time?
I think we can open up for questions.
Yep. Mr. Hal Keiotis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, we held a departmental site plan review meeting, and we had about six or seven departments joining us. We've received comments from the light department that we forwarded to Bankham and from Mark Ryan with his engineering review. The comments were kind of minor in nature from the engineering department. We've also reviewed the site plan and found that, for the most part, it's a fairly straightforward plan, and they didn't find any major issues. We provided our written comments to Bankham, and what I noticed in my review is that we need to kind of get the address correct on the two different sets of plans. If there's any site lighting changes, that needs to be provided. We've received renderings of the buildings. A statement needs to be added to the plan indicating that the walkways and accessways are ADA/AB compliant. As Bankham mentioned, they will be taking some trees down for the addition, and I've requested that they replace those trees in kind, as he offered to do with the same number of trees. And that is about it for our comments. What I'm suggesting that the board do tonight is to, since the plans are really fairly far along and Moderna's in a big hurry to get this approved, that we would make a recommendation to approve the site plan this evening and not subject to making conditions of approval for anything missing that's required.
Okay. Do we have any questions regarding the note that we received, Paul, regarding the capacity limitations on the power from the light department? Is that something that Moderna is researching on their end?
We know we have...
This is Doyle.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Doyle. We know we have adequate power currently at the site. In fact, we already identified the distribution gear that will feed this addition.
Okay.
And I offered to Dan Marcy that we can undertake the conversation over resumee to the building, recognizing how critical the operations are. And we also talked with Dan about discussing the former UTI building, what we refer to as 200-Tech Drive, in terms of the defeat to that building.
Mr. Pachakowski, did you have a question, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just first off, before I ask about the plan, I'd just like to congratulate Moderna on, I saw on the news tonight, you shipping products. I think you guys, it's just amazing, and I'm glad you're in Norwood and I'm very proud as a citizen of Norwood, and I think most people in Norwood are, that you are in Norwood, and I can tell people, hey, yeah, they make that in Norwood. And even though, you know, you guys are you guys, you're part of Norwood, and we're very proud of that. As far as the plan, I agree with the town planner, Paul, on, you know, we understand the urgency in this and why the need for the urgency. And just going on the past history of what you did when you initially came before the board a few years ago, and the way that building turned out and the look of it, and, you know, you did everything you... Plus, I have no qualms about going forward with Paul's recommendation of approving this, and we can work out details down the road, because I think you guys did it right the first time, and I have no reasons to believe you all do it right this time. So, I would go with the planist's recommendation for approval. And again, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Pachakowski. Mr. Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question on the sewer line that's under the building. Now, where is that? Just going to go a little bit further as we look at this? I guess that's to the west, I believe. Is this going to go around the building a little differently?
Yeah. So, as you're looking at this plan, the hatched or shaded area that crosses through where my mouse is running now is the location of the existing sewer, so it's in conflict with the building, conflict with the building here. We would pick it up from a manhole, an existing manhole in the parking area or in the delivery area onsite, route it up and around the building. There's some stormwater infrastructure in this area, which is why we're bringing it so far up and around, and then tie it back into the manhole on the downstream side of the building. So, all the work to relocate that sewer will be within our private property and not within the right of way. It's really just to give us some clearance to the building and some of the other infrastructure onsite that we need to accommodate.
Thank you. Is there any elevation on that sewer line moving?
The, we are able to preliminary review on it, and looking at the line, we do have the pitch required to reroute it as shown on our plan.
Okay. Just to add to that, Moderna is in the process of fully optimizing the footprint of this addition, and if it is all possible, we're going to try and avoid that easement, again, if at all possible. Like I said, we're still optimizing that. We hope to have that completed in the next two or three weeks here, and we will come back before you if there is any significant change to this plan.
I think also one last thing. With the conversation this morning with the town engineer, he had asked us to provide a profile for that sewer line for his review with our final plans that would be conditioned. And if the sewer line is relocated based off the optimization of the building, we would provide that profile with our plans per his comments.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, further to Bankham's comments, since the criteria for this design is to be implemented as quickly as possible, because we, Moderna would like to get the benefits of the increased production rate from this addition. Benefits are pretty substantial. They could, as soon as they have use of this building, they can supply the same amount of product in 30% less time or something like that. But the way in which the town's interests and Moderna's are congruent is the less impact it has to the town in terms of the light and the sewer and everything else, the faster the project can be done and the sooner Moderna can realize the benefits. And of course, the whole world can realize the benefits as well. So, that's the way we're optimizing the design.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Mr. Sheen?
I just wanted to say, and I'm all for moving ahead on this, and I just want to make sure with, Paul, how is it going to work as far as if this gets voted through with conditions? Is there something we'll need to sign, or is this something you'll be able to sign? I just want to make sure we're able to do this as quickly as possible as everyone also wants to do. Could you just fill us in on that?
So, our procedure for site plan approvals is a decision that I signed, that the board doesn't need to sign like a special permit. So, we could have a decision ready by tomorrow, the next day, and make this a priority for us. So, I'm prepared to have a decision ready within a day, and they would be able to provide us revised plans as they've been worked out at their end, and this wouldn't delay them. They could move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Sheen? To follow up, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I believe you're looking for a vote tonight, and I'm happy to do that if that's something we think we can do, Paul. That's really the second part of my question. And is it just a matter of us getting those conditions out front when the motion is made and then following through and voting accordingly?
Yes, I think the board can proceed that way. We have some comments that we received from the town engineer that would be incorporated as conditions of approval for the final plan to include all the details that he's asked for. The landscaping plan is really kind of the only biggest thing that I have, as the product doesn't really displace parking or anything like that. So, I think we're in good shape to have the board vote this tonight with conditions. We'll write those conditions up and send them off to the board.
And we deal with minor modifications if and when they come along?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sheen, if you'd like to make that motion?
I'm, just one question first, though. Is that something, the conditions you would have to read out tonight at this time? Are you prepared? Or is, I just want to make sure that we're doing it correctly and that we, I'm very much prepared to do it tonight. I'm very much prepared to make that motion. But usually, we read out the conditions. Are we all set on that tonight?
So, what I have now for comments from the plan reviewer, asking them to address the comments from the light department, which they've received, and they really aren't concerned because the site does already have sufficient capacity, to correct the addresses that are listed on the two plan types and provide us with any lighting that's going to be proposed on the building or in vicinity of the new walkway leading up, a statement that the plans comply with the State Architectural Access Board, the American Disabilities Act, and to provide us with a landscaping plan which will show an equal number of trees replaced that would be cut down for the addition. The only other conditions would be related to the details that the town engineer requested, asking for, you know, a cross-section, a profile of the sewer line, things like that.
Then I'm prepared to make that motion with the conditions as stated by Mr. Hal Keiotis, and if there are any others, and also with what the town engineer has proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Pachakowski, would you like to second that, please?
I'd be proud to.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous, 5-0. On the roll call. Mr. Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye. Thank you very much. 5-0, it passed.
Mr. Maloney? Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Maloney would like to chime in.
I'm sorry, I didn't see him raising his hand. Good evening, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to the members of the board and all our friends from Moderna. My name is Tom Maloney. I'm a member of the Norwood Board of Selectmen. Just wanted to join in tonight. I heard from my colleague, Mr. Plasko, that Moderna would be presenting, and I wanted to join in. I had the pleasure, three and a half years ago, of delivering remarks at the groundbreaking. That seems like eons ago, doesn't it, Mr. Patel? Long time ago, boy. But the town is, and I know you know this, but the town is very proud and we're honored to be involved in the partnership with Moderna. We were from the outset, and we are even more so now under the current circumstance, although nobody, nobody asked what has happened in the world the last nine to 12 months. But Moderna's response to it, the research and development that have gone on, particularly in Norwood, make us proud in a sense to have been a part of this partnership with you and with your firm. We appreciate the remarks of Mr. Nickerson as well, and as you can see, the board is enthusiastic, I think, about working with you on this addition to the building. So, thank you for all you're doing on behalf of the town, by extension, everybody in the world, and we look forward to great things in the future. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your, we appreciate your collaboration.
Okay. Okay, moving on. 7:15 has come. We have Mr. Hearn on the line?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and to all the members of the board. How are you?
We have an informal discussion on a potential subdivision?
Very informal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to speak, and Dan Merrick, who's our engineer, is with us, as well as Derek Fitzgerald, who's the principal of the Marion Group, my client. What we wanted to discuss with you was a proposed single-family subdivision in an area bounded by roughly by Prospect Street and off of an extension of Howard Street. And I did send over to Mr. DeShane and Mr. Hal Keiotis this afternoon some plans that they could put up, and I, Patrick, if you could maybe put up the, whatever plan you have there. Either one is fine. All right. Thank you. This is, we can show it. This is a piece of property. We refer to it as 76 Prospect Street. It's over seven acres of land. There is on the property presently a single-family house that is outlined faintly there. There is a second single-family house that is not part of this that is in the middle shaded by the proposed cul-de-sac. Running through the property is a paper street that is the continuation of Howard Street, which begins at Washington Street and runs up to, ends at Fulton Street. But on paper, it continues across right through the middle of this site onto Prospect Street. And there is another street. We show the proposed road on the left-hand side of the picture. That is Chestnut Street, which is a paper street on the 1911 plan that I'll ask Mr. DeShane to put up in a moment. We're proposing 19 single-family lots. This is a single-family district requiring 10,000 feet of area, 90 feet of frontage, 90 feet of lot width. And this is what my client is proposing for. I want to point out, this is a very preliminary plan, but we wanted to discuss this with you and would welcome any feedback. My client has the property under agreement. There is a section of the property that goes out to, near the North Arrow, that goes out to Prospect Street, and that is the present driveway that provides access to the residence of the two homes on the property. We've laid this out as a building of Howard Street up to a point where we have that V-shaped intersection, and going off on the left-hand side is Chestnut Street as it is laid out on paper. That goes all the way out to Prospect Street. And the other part of it, the right-hand side, would be a new road ending in a cul-de-sac. As we lay it out, we would need some relief, some waivers with respect to the width of the layout on the section of Prospect Street that goes beyond Lot 17 and Lot 1, which are on the Chestnut Street side there, because the original layout is 40 feet, and the town now requires 55 feet. We'd also need some relief where Howard Street intersects with Fulton Street coming in there. Again, that layout is only 40 feet. Once we get well into the site by Lot 5 at the bend there, we would have room to build a 55-foot road. We would probably ask for a waiver with respect to the width of pavement for 24 feet roughly, and one five-foot sidewalk along the roads. Beyond that, I think we could probably comply with the requirements. That area that abuts Prospect Street, which is presently used as a driveway, would make a very nice entrance, but it only has 34 feet of width, and that does limit it. You could probably put a roadway in there, but it would not be compliant with your requirements. But that is, and it does widen as it goes out. But we've drawn this based upon existing, not existing on the ground, but shown on plans, paper streets. Patrick, could you switch to the other plan for a moment? That might give people a little perspective here. And if we can make it a little bit bigger on the screen, I don't know if you can do that. I think you're in control, and I'm not on this. All right. This is a plan from 1911 called Rockland Park, and it is, so it shows Chestnut Street coming down at an angle, and straight across, running left or right across your screen, is the continuation of Howard Street, and it shows Fulton Street before Fulton Street was built all the way Before Fulton Street was built, all the way down to where it intersects Prospect Street and Washington Street. So if these streets had been built, they would look like that. Chestnut, we propose to use a part of that and continue it all the way out to Prospect Street. Howard Street, we only propose to come in to the point where it meets Chestnut Street. And then on our plan that we were just looking at, we would head a little to the east. And, but the, the property we're dealing with encompasses most of the lots shown on the Rockland Park plan. But also, in the lower part of that plan, which would be pretty much to the east of, of the Howard Street lots, there's another 100 to maybe 150 feet that is part of the land that my client is, is buying. So again, it's going to be, it's proposed to be single-family homes. They won't be giant homes, they're going to be on 10,000 square foot lots. We think this can be done with minimal waivers from the board. We don't think we need at the moment any zoning relief in terms of any variance, but we wanted to get this out in front of you and have a preliminary discussion, get any comments or reaction from the board that might help us in, as we work on more detailed plans. Mr. Merrick is here, he has to leave for another meeting in about 10 minutes or so, but by then you might be, had enough of us anyway. And the, Mr. Fitzgerald is also here, the proposed builder. Mr. Fitzgerald, by the way, is the principal of Manhattan Development, one of the principals of Manhattan Development, which is the company that I think you may be familiar with that is building the condominiums on the site, the former site of the convent at St. Catherine's. So he's got experience building in the town. This is a different style of building from what we're building there. But, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to take any questions or comments. And Mr. Merrick, we'll weigh in, I'm sure, if I've left anything out. There's Dan. And Mr. Fitzgerald, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Mr. Sheen?
On that first map, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that first map, there is a house there now. I kind of missed out where David had said it was. Can you point that out again?
David, you're on mute. David Hearn?
Yeah, I've got it, thank you. All right, if you look at that cul-de-sac, Patrick, can we blow that up at all? All right. Parcel, you see on the cul-de-sac, there's a line drawn to parcel B, that's an irregular-shaped piece of land. The land immediately adjacent to that, it says Building Number 74. That's not part of what we have under contract. That is a separate house. The property that we are buying includes a house number 76, which is to the left of that and has a house, a tennis court, and a pool. The pool is located right in the middle of what would be our road. The tennis court is off by Lot Number 15, which is near where the two roads meet. Mr. Sheen, does that answer the question?
Well, I seen Lot 15, I couldn't find all the, you said 76, I didn't know they went up that high. Unless...
No, not Lot 76, House 76. 76 Prospect Street is the address of the property that we're talking about here. There is another house, Number 74 Prospect, shown on the plan, that is not part of this proposal and is not subject to the contract.
Okay, this has to be dropped down so I can see it. I, I don't see Prospect Street.
Patrick, I think you've got control over this. There's Prospect Street. And you see this section here near the North Arrow that juts out to Prospect Street?
It's just a minute, oh, sorry. No, I don't see it because it's too low. Oh, there it is.
There, that, that piece, like a finger pointing out to Prospect Street?
Yeah.
That is, that's the present driveway that serves those two properties, those two homes.
Okay, thank you.
They said it's about 34 feet wide at where it meets the street.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Yeah, there we go. Dave, I'm with Joe on this. So I'm looking at, the proposed, the cul-de-sac is proposed, so it's not built yet. I see the finger that goes out to Prospect Street, which is the driveway. Now, you said that the hashed area, which is Building 74, is existing and not part of the, not part of the development, right?
That's correct. That's owned by somebody not connected to the seller.
But what about Lot 12? Is that part of the development or not part of the development?
Lot, Lot 12 is part of the development.
So how does that, where's the frontage and where's, how does that Building 74, where's their access to a street?
There, they will have, there's that little area marked parcel B, that irregular-shaped piece of, that would be conveyed to, be attached to House Number 74.
But right now, today, they, they go out through that finger? Is that what, is that what you're telling me?
Both houses are served by...
How do they get out to a street today?
They go that driveway, that finger that goes out to Prospect Street.
Okay, and then that, but that's going to be part of the development, that finger, okay?
That's right.
You're basically rerouting their driveway to the new cul-de-sac.
Well, we haven't got that, we haven't got that far, but we're providing them a frontage.
Ideally, that's what, what would happen, right?
I suppose, that's right, yeah, yes.
Their driveway would be rerouted to the cul-de-sac.
That's correct.
All right, okay, that, that clears that up. You had a, you mentioned possible waivers. The road width, you're talking about a 20-foot pavement and sidewalks, five foot on one side only?
24 feet. Dan, do you want to speak to that? You laid this out and you probably speak better than I could. Dan Merrick?
Yeah, hey, Dan.
Legacy Engineering. In the, at the point where we enter from Fulton Street and the point where we enter from Prospect along Chestnut, we have an existing 40-foot right-of-way that we would be using for the road. So the initial thought here is that, at least in those two locations, that we would have a 24-foot paved width. We could perhaps go to 26-foot and then have one sidewalk in those locations. In other locations throughout the subdivision, we have the full 50-foot, 55-foot width of the layout. We could do two sidewalks in the other locations in the interior of the subdivision if the board wanted us to. But in those two entrance points, we're working with an existing 40-foot wide street layout.
So if you went with one sidewalk, Dan, you'd have a five-foot, so you'd have, how much pavement, 24 feet?
If we went with 24 feet of pavement and a five-foot sidewalk, that would leave us about 11 feet for grass strips, you know, between the sidewalk side and the other side.
And then in the center, you could do it?
Yeah, we could, we could comply with your regulations in the center of the site. And we have it laid out that way.
And the sidewalk would run along like Lot 14, all the way down to Lot, 15 or whatever it is, 15 up to 19, I guess it is?
Yeah, we could, I mean, that's an open to discussion which side the sidewalk goes on, but, you know, there's certainly room for one sidewalk pretty easily in those, those two slightly narrower locations. We're working with those existing old street layouts.
And the cul-de-sac would be diameter of the cul-de-sac?
Yep, the cul-de-sac complies with your regulations. It, it's shorter than the maximum length allowed and meets all the other dimensional requirements.
Jeez, who knew there were seven acres still left in Norwood like that?
It's about nine and a quarter, actually.
Oh, jeez. That's, that's it for right now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions at this time? Mr. Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question, whether you might remember or Paul. It's not too unusual nowadays where we've had developments, usually they're dead ends because there's not much room. And those are the kind of things we've seen over the years. We don't see too many. And we have shrunk them down. Do you remember probably the last project we did down off Ellis Ave? What, what the width was on the street? What we, you know, were able to shrink it down to?
I don't remember.
I don't know about Ellis Ave, but I do, I did design Power Lane, and that's a 40-foot layout with 24 feet of pavement and one sidewalk on one side. So it's, it's not something that you haven't done recently.
Okay.
I don't recall the width of the layout for Maxwell Estates, but as Dan said, 40 feet is a kind of a standard right-of-way width. A lot of communities have a narrow right-of-way width requirements, and Norwood does. And as he indicated, the Power Lane subdivision, which is under construction, had a 40-foot layout and the board, you know, approved that with one sidewalk. That would actually be a good, good way for the board members to visualize what this would look like. If it's got similar pavement width and right-of-way, it's under construction, you can take a swing by there and see how it looks and get a feel for what that kind of subdivision road looks like.
One more question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How does this compare with a Maxwell Ave? As far as length, it's, would you say it's somewhat similar? In length, you know?
Who are you asking, Mr. Sheen?
If Paul remembers or Al, anyone on the board might remember.
I think Maxwell's about the same size. It might be a little bit shorter with three, yeah, that was seven or eight lots, so it was about the same size.
Okay. I know that the 55 feet nowadays, we don't, we have these smaller subdivisions and they seem to work out for us that we don't really need to go the full 55 feet, certainly.
Mr. Hatchey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this answers a question that I've always wondered what was, what was up there. I guess I'd ask this, looking at the plan, the existing, try to flip back to it. Oh, I guess I don't need to. The existing driveway, it's been said that that is not a wide enough piece of property to accommodate the entry to this development. Is that correct?
Well, it's narrower than 40 feet. It's about 35 feet. So it is, it would be theoretically possible to put a layout in there that came out to there, but it would be slightly narrower than the other two location points that we have. It would be slightly narrower than 40 feet. But it is a possible option.
And Chestnut Street, as it's drawn, if you're pulling it off a prospect, there, the first couple, the, the beginning of that drive on the, on, I don't know what direction it is, but it looks like you'd be passing the back of two existing house lots on Myrtle Street? Is that correct?
Yes, there's two, there's two kind of oversized house lots on Myrtle, Myrtle Street that kind, that back up to that old paper street.
Sure. Okay. Oh, and as far as the, the structure that's not part of this deal, that lot, that, that house is obviously remaining, correct?
At this point, yes.
Can anybody describe the current, is, clearly there's two properties up there on, are they on two different lots right now? In other words, how is this parcel cut?
74 is like an island. It's, it's owned by a different entity, it has no frontage on any constructed road. What, what it has instead is an access easement. You see on the plan that 10-foot right-of-way noted?
To the driveway.
Yeah, that's their easement, and the driveway is actually outside of that easement. But that's their access to Prospect Street. They, they, they're like an island in the middle of this property. They have no frontage and they don't abut anyone other than this property owner.
And, and the, the current island, as you're calling it, the existing lot, is it that identical dimension or is it approximately? Do you have an idea?
Well, the sketch is approximate, we have done a property survey, but that's pretty, pretty close.
That's pretty much what it is, okay.
Yes, well, our thought is that we would, we would basically create parcel B and give that to them, and that would give them frontage where they really have none today. They would, they would then have frontage on the new road.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the exist, the other house, 76, Building Number 76, as it's shown, can be seen on Lot 14, is sort of an outline of it. So it's removed a couple of lots from where Building 74 is. But if you look at Lot 14, you may see the outline of Building Number 76. That's just been highlighted for us.
Oh, wow. What is parcel A doing? Just going to live fallow?
Parcel A, we are kind of setting that aside for drainage design. When we, you know, if we move forward here, when we get into a detailed design, we would obviously have to comply with your stormwater regulations, which we anticipate that we will certainly be able to do. And we'll use as much of parcel A as we need to for stormwater management. And then the remainder will probably just be a portion to the surrounding lots. The surrounding lots would just get slightly larger if we don't need all of parcel A for drainage.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Pachakowski?
Question for Paul. Just throwing something out there now. Brian had brought up, you know, the possibility of that, that using that finger, even though it's only 34 feet in width. As a planner or maybe a talk to Mark, would it be more advantageous to the town to maybe do some creative things to get that road out all the way through and eliminate a cul-de-sac or keep the cul-de-sac and not have a through street? I guess, I don't know if that's an engineering question or, but just, I mean, we're not deciding tonight, but I'm just curious what would be the, you know, is one better than the other?
I, so the way it's laid out now, there is, there is one through street to connect Howard Street all the way through to Prospect. The, the length of the cul-de-sac where is fairly short. And a lot of planners don't, you know, they don't like cul-de-sacs and they like through streets. But a lot of homeowners like cul-de-sacs because they feel that it's safer for kids without having through traffic. Based on that, I think that, that the way Dan has this laid out is, is a good layout. And it provides one through street and one cul-de-sac, and I think that that works pretty well.
Anyone else, any questions? Mr. Maloney, you want to chime in here?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Maloney? Would you like to?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm enjoying it very much, though.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chairman?
Professional courtesy, Tom.
Thank you so much, Al, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Merrick reminded me a moment ago, he's got to leave to jump off to another meeting, but hopefully you have no further questions for him.
No technical questions.
All right. And I'm happy that we're providing entertainment for Mr. Maloney, that's one of my goals in life. But I, I will say, referring to the conversation and the discussion a moment ago that Mr. Pachakowski had, you know, as Mr. Merrick said, that's about 34, 35 feet wide, that area that comes out to Prospect Street. And physically, it might be big enough. Whether it makes sense to make that a roadway or not is another question. And it's not something that we had planned for or designed because we wanted to bring this to you as a plan that requires minimal waivers. And this is a preliminary plan, and we'll be tinkering with it as more detailed work is done. But it might be something that's worth thinking about at some point. I don't know, my client may decide it's something worth thinking about. We haven't really discussed it, but I find it interesting. We haven't really discussed it, but I find it interesting that people have looked at the plan and, and raised that question. So we'll keep it in mind. But I thank you all for your time tonight. Again, we're happy to answer any questions, but we know you have other business also.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Mr. American, thank you very much as well.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll have further conversations with Mr. Halkiotis and Mr. DeShane as we work on our plans and we probably will be back with you folks again in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minor modification. And site plan endorsement, 596 Boston Providence Highway, Matt Smith, P E from Norwood Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, this is a site plan that the board approved in, on October 19th. We're here tonight to ask that you endorse the plan that, that you approved. But as part of that endorsement, we have made some minor modifications to, to the plan based on requests by our client, our customer. And we would ask that you would accept these modifications as minor modifications inside the plan. A quick summary is the building area changed slightly from 68 or four square feet to 69, 20 square feet. Because we had to expand the building, we reduced the amount of storage spaces from 65 to 63. But the concept stays the same. There's no change in the circulation. All of the utilities have changed. This has stayed the same. All of the drainage design has changed, has stayed the same, but we, we are obligated and understand that, that, that we must show you any changes to the plan. So tonight we're asking that you sign the plan that we've submitted. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have or listen to any comments that either Paul or Pat has. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Paul?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the, the list of changes that they're requesting to the approved plan and they're all minor in nature. And I was going to authorize those minor modifications, but since they needed to get a vote from the board to endorse the plan, I figured we'd give them the opportunity to do that. But I, I think that the, the changes that they're proposing are all minor and would recommend the board signing off on those.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions at this time regarding the modifications? Any chance I could get a motion? To accept the modifications as presented. Mr. Shan?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Some moved?
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Petkowski. I got a motion and a second. Now if we're going to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous five zero for the roll. Mr. Shan?
Aye.
Mr. Petkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman is aye as well. Five zero.
Mr. Chairman, one more vote I'm going to ask the board to take and that's a vote to endorse the, the plan. Because this is a special permit, we do have the board sign the plans because they get recorded. So I'm going to recommend that the board, board take a vote to endorse the plan.
Make it a motion to endorse.
Motion to endorse?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous five zero for the roll. Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Petkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shan?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye. Five zero. Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the town planner when these would be ready to sign and, and we'd have to do it at the town hall?
So I, Pat, they've submitted the plans already. They're ready to go. Yeah. So the plans are in the office and the board can give Pat a call and get my heads up and he can make arrangements for you to endorse the plan.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Thank you very much. Have a very great holiday season, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Same to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Al. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Continuation of public hearing. Hour of 7:35 has come and gone. I got a couple of questions on, on this particular thing. We extended for another year down at you know, not university, um.
Carnegie Row.
Carnegie Row. Thank you, Paul. Now, if we go ahead and push this through and go to town meeting and get it approved, do they have a pre-existing condition that becomes permanent with them?
I, I wouldn't characterize it as becoming permanent, but I think the special permit protects them and protects that property from continuing that use. Since the board has made it pretty clear that they don't want to make that a permanent use there, I don't think that, that, I think the applicant understands that and I don't think that it locks that in to be permanent based on the discussions and the votes that the board has had over the years to, to kind of extend it on a year by year basis. But the special permit that's in place does protect that property.
Okay. So I think I'd, I'd rather hold off on, on pushing this change to the, to the bylaw through. So we don't get into that unless the, the holder of the special permit would like to sunset it.
So currently the only zoning district that open lot storage for vehicles is allowed is in the manufacturing zone. And we've had discussions in the context of the hearings for the Boston Providence Highway that the board seemed to feel that, that we need to continue to provide that use somewhere in town and not just prohibit it across the board. And so the, the, the decision was that it would be allowed in that Boston Providence Highway. However, for, the board did feel that they didn't want to have all Vanderbilt, Bell Park eligible for open lot storage. And where we left it at our last hearing a month ago was that only the properties that front on Route One in that Vanderbilt Park area would be allowed to be utilized for open lot storage. And so the bylaw amendment that I, I provided to the board includes a footnote to the table of use regulations and that footnote says that open lot vehicle storage is allowed within the Boston Providence Highway District, except for properties within Vanderbilt Business Park between Park Place and River Ridge Road that do not have frontage on Boston Province Highway.
That was number 14, Paul?
Yeah. Yes. So that seemed to be my most quickest straightforward approach to trying to solve that problem. It could be, could be handled a number of different ways, but this was the way that I thought was just short and, and straightforward. I did run this by Ted Brovitz and, and he said he thought it would work. So this is what I'm suggesting. The other alternative that the board had discussed was just prohibiting it outright. So if you looked at that table of use regulations again, it would just have no, no, no across in all districts. But at the last meeting, Ernie seemed to indicate that he thought that the use should, should be allowed somewhere. And I think there was some support from some other board members, but that kind of brings us up to where we left off a month ago.
Mr. Petkowski?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just going to, talking about Mr. Spiegel's property on Carnegie Row going forward. So if we put the, like Paul had mentioned, and we allow it on Route One, that property obviously would not fall into it, but where we have a use now, as long as we continue to permit it, permit it, it will have that use. As, you know, if they abandon it or we decide at some point not to extend the permit, then that use would go away and it would not be allowed. Conversely, if you look at the property on Everett Street, the old Holton Farm property that's in front of the ZBA, they are under the current bylaw of using a manufacturing area. Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, and if they will have that in, they, they never have to come back for a, a refresher permit, correct? They have that in perpetuity, as they say.
So the Holton property is located in the limited manufacturing zone. And the way that got approved by the zoning board was that Attorney Hilliard, representing Peter Katniss, explained to the zoning board that the site had historically been used as open lot storage. It had been used for loam and mulch. Heavy equipment was stored there. And he was able to convince the, the zoning board that that was open lot storage back in the day. And this is open lot storage storing vehicles. The use is the same, but what's being stored is different. The Board of Appeals agreed with that and they, they granted approval for a 200 car storage area. There was disagreement between the applicant and the zoning board on how many cars they approved, where the applicant thought that they approved 600 cars. And the zoning board said, no, we had only approved 200. 100 is the, the determining factor of whether or not any project needs a major project site plan approval special permit from the planning board. If they have more than 100 cars, it's supposed to come to the planning board for a major project special permit. If it's less than 100 cars, it can be approved by the zoning board. And this decision that took place a couple of years ago, I, I didn't, I didn't agree with the way that it turned out where the applicant was only required to go in front of the zoning board, not the planning board, and he had triggered a major project special permit. I think I wrote a memo at the time and, and I was critical and probably ruffled, ruffled some feathers and, and what I said, but as, as a jurisdictional issue two years ago, I disagreed with the way it got handled. I think that the, the zoning board at their last hearing told the applicant that they really need to come in front of the planning board for a major project special permit. In the event that the Boston Province Highway District is approved at town meeting in February, they would have had to come anyways. Because it was added into that district and the use would be allowed in that district. So that was going to trigger it anyways. I had discussed this with Attorney Hilliard. I don't know why they went forward with the zoning board because I told them they were going to probably have to come in front of the planning board later anyways. But they went that route and then they were kind of turned around and pointed back to the planning board. So we will likely see that project in February or March.
So Paul, just because I don't have the, my zoning map in front of me. In relation, okay, so I'm fine with Vanderbilt. We approve on Route One. Carnegie Row goes permit by permit for extensions. I'm fine with that. In relation to the Holtman property, which will be in the district if it gets approved at town meeting, how will? How will that sit? Will that, will they have to come back for permits or did we include that piece of property in open lot storage? Was that, I don't have the, I wasn't quite sure how we left that, that Everett Street triangle up there. Are we allowing open lot storage or not? And, and like, I just wonder where, where, where we're at at that Everett Street piece of property.
So the way the district boundaries were originally drafted, that triangle and that, that right side of the street of Everett Street was not included in the district. The owner met with me and he met with, with Tony Mazuko and, and told Tony that he wanted to be included in the Boston Province Highway District. And at a planning board meeting in October, we discussed it and the board voted to add that, that property in. We also added the UPS property next door because we couldn't just have one, one property sticking out, like an island in that, that triangle there. So that is in the district and they will likely come back to the planning board with plans for 600 automobiles to be stored there.
And that would be by, by permit? That, that piece of property would be allowed by permit?
Yep. By main, it would be a major project special permit.
Okay.
You go, Ernie.
Thank you.
But getting back to my original question, Paul. We, we feel very comfortable with this footnote number 14.
I, I think it's, it's clear enough. I'm curious to see if the other board members agree with that approach.
I just don't want to tie up that property. Mr. Shan?
It looks, it looks good to me, you know?
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Hatchey, you want to jump in here?
No, I just, I believe it's consistent with what's been discussed.
Mr. Bamber?
I, I don't have the map in front of me, but the, a, a simple way to, to read it or to remember it is anything on the interior of Vanderbilt will not be included as open for vehicle storage.
That's correct. So Vanderbilt Park is all in the Boston Province Highway, but this footnote 14 tries to make it clear that only the properties that have frontage on Route One between Park Place, one end of Vanderbilt Park and, and River Ridge Road. Those frontage lots can have open lot storage. And also be aware that the way the Boston Province Highway District was written, something like open lot storage cannot be up along the road, that that has to be preserved for more commercial uses, that that would have to be set back at least 100 feet from the edge of the right of way of, of Route One. So we're not going to be seeing these things. Hopefully in the future, they'll be kind of tucked away, surrounded by some other buildings.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just one last question, just for clarification, because it's been a while. So Paul, as we come north on Route One, we leave Vanderbilt, we cross Dean Street. Those, we're still going to allow the open lot storage, but set back, correct? Like I'm thinking of across from Jack Madden, that big empty lot that you know, guys remember as the Iron Horse Restaurant parking lot, which is now a big vacant lot. It would be allowed there, but not, but, but as the bylaw says, it, it has to be set back, correct?
Yeah. So it would, it would have to be set back 100 feet from the road, any open lot storage on, in that Boston Province Highway District.
Okay.
Pat's kind of zooming in on it for us.
And we heard. Manhattan Street Road or East on the right.
Yeah, we heard this week that Workout World is going to be leaving that, that property too.
Really?
That's right.
Just COVID related, Paul can't make a buck?
No, I, I, I think, you know, they had been struggling for a while and I don't know why they're leaving, but I assume that business isn't good. It's, it's obvious, I think the, the pandemic has caused a lot of health clubs to, to. It's, I think the pandemic has caused a lot of health clubs to have to fold.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are we going to be taking a second look at the actual zoning map before next town meeting? For modification?
Are we going to be looking at?
Was, was the, was that zoning map accepted already? I, I can't remember.
So the adoption of that zoning map was on the warrant for November 11th. I had a conversation with town council today and we had a meeting with some people from MAPC that are likely going to be helping the town to run a virtual town meeting. Our regional planning agency, the Metropolitan Planning Council, has recently helped the town of Stoughton and the town of Dedham hold virtual public, virtual town meetings. And I believe the town is in the process of contracting with them to get their assistance to help us through having a virtual town meeting using Zoom software instead of go to meeting. So to answer your question, Rob, that zoning map, the adoption of it, will be an article for town meeting. And the selectmen have yet to select a date for that town meeting. They're talking about like the last week of January or one of the first week or two of February. I think it's likely to be a date in the first week or so of February to give adequate time for the town to be prepared to hold a virtual town meeting.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I continue to kind of keep us off track for a moment on town meeting, that conversation with town council this afternoon was about whether or not we would need to redo our public hearings. As you all know, we're required to hold hearings before town meeting. We're actually holding one right now, a continued hearing for the open lot storage article. And council said that, yeah, you, if you have your public hearing within six months of the town meeting, you're all set. But what happened was the town meeting was opened and dissolved. And he wants to make sure that we're all legal, because this is a very unusual circumstance. And he's recommended that we go, go back and hold these hearings again. And so I told him it wasn't going to be a problem for us and that I didn't anticipate, you know, having to set aside a lot of time to do that. But Pat and I discussed this afternoon, scheduling a hearing for, I guess, second meeting in January, which was like the 25th, Pat, something like that. So, so we are going to this week reschedule the hearings for the town meeting that will likely take place the beginning of February.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or whatever? Mr. Bamber.
I like the footnote 14. With the table use that you guys put forward, I just want to say that I support that.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. Smith, do you have any questions?
No, sir, thank you. It's just interesting to me to find out what's happening and how things are progressing. But, but, but thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? So move. So move. In a second?
Second.
Eric, not yet. Is that you, Ernie, on the second?
Sure.
Who made the second?
Fine. Second.
Okay. A motion in a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous for the roll. Mr. Pachakowski.
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen.
Aye.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Now, Paul, would you help us outline the, the vote for the, can I just read it off of this?
Yeah, I'd recommend the board vote to approve the open lot storage article as revised.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on that? Mr. Sheen, thank you. In a second, Mr. Pachakowski. Okay, I got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous for the roll. Mr. Sheen.
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey.
Aye.
Pachakowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
The chairman is an aye, five zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can I ask, I have a question, just a comment to the town planner. When we go to, when we go to town meeting, is it possible for you guys or with Ted to really to dumb down a map? So everybody knows, you know, the boundaries and within the boundaries where housing is allowed. You know, we have a housing, you know, aspect to this. And we also now have an open lot storage. Those are the two big pieces of the pie, you know, that people are going to want to know about. So we can show people, you know, this is where open lot storage is allowed. Obviously, you know, this is where housing, we would allow some housing, mixed use type of a thing. Just so it's pretty clear and even guys like me can figure it out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have some maps that zoom in on the three areas that are going to allow for, for mixed use development. So that's a good idea. And I've also asked Ted to answer what I anticipate is going to be a question of how many potential housing units could be developed from that bylaw. And so he's working on that and will hopefully have an answer for that question if it's asked.
And the affordable, if there's an affordable, that'll be asked as well. Is there an affordable component, component to the, to the housing?
And there is, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Do we want to move on to the department updates and other business? Paul, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Have you done an update on the hospital? I see they've pulled down the fences and pulled out the vents and kind of making it look like it's gone back to normal. Have, have you heard a decision on the hospital? What they're going to do?
I have no information on the hospital other than I sent them a copy of the medical services over way district bylaw and I haven't heard anything back. I didn't get a response. So in an effort to reach out to them and ask them if this looks okay with them, do they need anything changed, do they have any issues? I got no response back. So I'll have to follow up with them next year.
Anything on the town of Westwood and the Amazon?
They're in the process of ironing that out. They had requested some additional trees to be provided as a landscape buffer. That was going to trigger the need for a conservation commission review. And so I think that National Development told the town of Westwood that they weren't interested in doing that.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, we, Pat and I worked on a year end status report and we reported to the board some of our activities. I don't really want to go into that, but I was glad to see that when we look back at what happened over the last year, that we really did get a lot done. Pat has been an amazing pulling in grant money and, and changing to changing conditions that the pandemic threw at us. And we were glad to be able to run some grant programs to help our local businesses and grant programs to provide housing assistance to those folks that are in need because of the economic conditions caused by the pandemic. So we were glad, glad that we got a lot done over the last year. And I want, it sounds like a good time for me to tell you all that I really appreciate working for the Norwood Planning Board and enjoy working with you. And I look forward to continuing that next year.
Well, thank you, Paul. And it's really nice that you're in favor of the pandemic so you can get more work done.
On the pandemic, we received an email from Tony Mazuko this afternoon advising us the town hall would be closing on the 28th of December for three weeks. And that it'll be closed to the public until January 19th. And that's, you know, tentative dates, but that's a message that he sent out to all the employees. We'll all be working from home and things will slow down over the next week around the holidays for our office. But after the first of the year, we will be back in action, but we will be working from home.
Even that? I love the attention.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul. This, it was very, very interesting reading your memorandum. And like I say, it was really, I'll tell you, really interesting. And that's like I say, I'm fortunate about the lack of a grand opening for the new rink. Okay. And Patrick, a real pat on the back to you, sir, for chasing down all these grants.
Yes.
People in town don't realize that. And I mean, that was over half a million dollars.
I mean, that was, that was both, you know, myself, Paul.
Paul, I'm not going to, I'm going to, one at a time. I'm giving you all the credit. You're the believing.
I was just going to say, like, as Paul mentioned in the memo, you know, when this all kind of broke down, you know, myself, Paul, Joe Collins, Tony Mazuko, Bernie Coop, I mean, there was kind of an all hands on deck effort to really see what was out there. And now we all kind of, we all stepped up.
Did I see you, Patrick, shoveling that pocket park down South North? Did I see you shovel that pocket park down South North?
Yeah. No, that was, I mean, obviously we wish we, you know, wanted to get that in before the snow, but I guess we didn't factor in a foot plus of snow coming this early, so.
I could see those, actually, I could see those being used in certain areas. The one, I saw the one down in South North on Washington Street. And I think it seems, and it's not a bad little idea.
When they're, I mean, if you, unfortunately, getting those out so late, you know, it was mostly just to see how they would look. But I mean, when we get into the spring and summer and get them really dressed up, I think they're going to really look really nice.
Absolutely. And the local merchants, you know, they'd be most appreciative of it.
Yeah. I mean, it's a great way, I mean, I, I like them specifically in South North just because of the, you know, the, how Washington Street is laid out. It kind of really breaks up the road, adds that little bit of outdoor recreation space. And it's, hopefully we'll, we'll see a little bit, see those put to good use in the spring.
Derek, you can turn your mic on now. Let's hear a little input from you as to your observation of your first meeting.
Sir, I wasn't really too sure how much I should speak up or interject. Concern they had with Moderna was the sewer line and the egress and cutting into that. Yeah, they compensated by going around, but the reconnection into the other manhole was a ninety degree connection. You know, has that really been looked into? What questions does the town engineer have regarding that? You know, the turbulence of the sewer coming into it is a concern. If they can reshape the building, I don't know what the functions are, what the programming is of the building to avoid the egress. And with the other side with the, the parcels they were talking about, the, the plan of the cul-de-sac. Yeah, it'd be nice if they, they could not have a cul-de-sac and actually connect into prospects. And, but it's really a stage. So some of the questions that they had was already asked by, by the other members.
Good. But it's nice to see you here, listening and seeing what, what comes about with us, if you will.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else?
Welcome aboard, Derek.
Thank you.
Derek, I would think in the future, like when we're discussing, you have those questions, by all means, bring them up. You know, you, you may look at some, your expertise, something that we may overlook or, you know, a question that's not asked, so by all means participate. You may not be able to vote on it, but by all means participate and, and, you know, the more questions that come up.
Speaking of which, I do, do we have something that came to my mind? Having to deal with the parcel that we kind of sort of planned was the, the car detailing bay and how they want to change the walkway, reduce from five feet to four feet. Accessibility laws require the 60 inches. So the question is, does that still provide the accessibility and reduce it down to 48 inches?
Was this the enterprise rental car plan or the?
Yes.
Yeah, I, that thought crossed my mind as well. Because I remembered that the sidewalk's got to be five feet wide. And so you've just confirmed that, that the four feet is not ADA compliant. So I'm going to have to, it's too bad that the project engineer just signed off, but I, I will talk to them about that tomorrow. We require that everything be AAB and ADA compliant. And there's actually a requirement that they have to put that on all the plans. So I will contact them and let them know that that's one of the modifications that, that that modification's going to be a problem. And, and see if they can.
Now, now, if that five feet, you know, that they can exit the building with the five feet and to turn to go down an ADA ramp to get away is fine. So the entire area does not need to be the 60 inches, it's just the access. Do you know what I mean?
So coming out of the building?
Yeah, as, as well as the ramp, the entire route.
Okay. All right, I'll talk to the building commissioner, Matt Walsh, about that as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Right, that was it.
Okay. Anyone else? Can we call it a night? Mr. Sheen.
Just one question. Is this is the, is this is the plan we, you wanted to sign tomorrow? Is that put us off? Paul?
We'll send you an email. After I talk to, to Matt Smith, I will get back to all of you and let you know what they want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion to close the meeting? Mr. Pachakowski.
Motion to close.
Second. In a second. A motion in a second to close this evening's meeting. All opposed? Unanimous. For the record. Mr. Pachakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Hatchey.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen.
Aye.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, five zero. Thank you. Have a good night, gentlemen. Merry Christmas.